Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. I will open up our North Liberty City Council meeting. Tracy, could you do a roll call, please?
Leibl.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Sittig.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wayson.
Here. Item three is approval of the agenda, and I think our addition made it on there. Do we have any questions? Can I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, or any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is our consent agenda. Is there anything on there to pull out and talk about separately? Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is public comment. Now is the time for anyone in the audience wishing to address council on something that's not already on our council agenda tonight. Now is your time. Seeing no one rushed for public comment, I'll move, I'll close public comment period, move on to item six, our engineer's report. Josiah.
Thanks, Mayor. Two quick updates. First, follow up on some questions from last meeting about Penn and 380, the interchange project. The first ramp closure is planned for roughly June still. No bump up or back. There is a change in their, in their approach for the year. The first ramp closure is planned for the northbound off-ramp, so getting off to get in North Liberty, that's the first closure. Two to three months. The second closure would then be the northbound on-ramp. I think maybe some correspondence we had, originally they were going to do both northside ramps this year. That's, that's not. They're going to do both northbound ramps this year. And next year, 2026, would be both southbound ramps. So first one's not till June at this point. There was also some questions about the temporary paving on the, the two ramps that are out there. Did follow up with Chief Veninga and Chief Platts. There's only been one minor property damage incident in the last four months, so it's holding, holding okay at the moment. And then an update on North Liberty Road Trail. The work has been slow a little bit with the weather as of late, but there's still street and curb ramp work along Penn Street that's underway. It's getting closer. The main trail going all the way out around the curve has all been graded and staked for paving, so they're getting closer on that. We've only ran into one issue with subgrade, bad subgrade and water, so there's a section we'll take care of that by taking it out, putting rock in. We're going to add a drain tile to make sure we catch that water and keep it out of the trail. So it's been going well from that end, from that, from that aspect of it. Everything's, looks pretty good. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Josiah? All right, I'll move on to item number seven. Ryan, that's our city administrator.
Okay, thanks. Just one item of note tonight, and that is a reminder that this Saturday is our annual cleanup day, and it'll bring you right to the, to the site. I would note that while we will take almost anything, we won't take paint or hazardous materials, of course, or normal household trash. Generally, we have a long line right at 7:00. So if you're looking to be strategic about your wait time, I'd suggest you let that line die down a bit and then, and then go at it from there. But it's usually a busy day and a successful day, and our, our team is, will be there and ready to go from this Saturday from 7:00 to 11:00. That's what I have, Mayor, unless there are any questions.
Thanks, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? Right. I'd have made his mayor's report, yet just a couple of things. Most of you are with me during these events over the last couple of weeks, and I forgot to bring my water bottle tonight that we got at the UIHC Hospital dedication back on the 11th. Some of us were there for the ribbon cutting on that Friday, great turnout, and Saturday was even more awesome from what it sounded like. Couple days before that, I was a part of Think Iowa City's five-year planning focus group down at, in University Heights, did that in the morning. And then just last Thursday morning, I led the first solar task force breakfast that the Johnson County Solar Task Force is putting on. The next series will be on Thursday, May 15th, followed up by Thursday, June 12th. All of those are available online via Zoom, or you can be in person down at Merge. I have two proclamations to read tonight. First one is our Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife; and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community; and whereas the city of North Liberty has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices; and whereas each year Arbor Day is observed by the people of North Liberty Iowa with the special attention paid to the care and planting of trees; and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Chris Hoffman, Mayor of the City of North Liberty Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025, to be Arbor Day in North Liberty, Iowa, and encourage all North Liberty citizens to participate in tree planting and nurture, protect, and wisely use Iowa's natural wonder of trees so that we will ensure a more beautiful city and state, promoting the well-being of this and future generations. Is there anyone in the audience to receive this proclamation? Seeing none, I did not think so. I'll move on to my mental health organization dedicated to building better lives for the millions of Americans affected by mental illness; and whereas the face of mental illness isn't some stranger, it is our coworkers, our neighbors, our friends, our families, and sometimes ourselves; and whereas mental illness does not discriminate, it affects adults, children, and people of every ethnic, socioeconomic, religious, and political background; and whereas one of five adults in the United States experiences a diagnosable mental disorder; and in one in five youth aged 13 to 18 experiences a severe mental disorder in any given year; and whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death for Americans' youth ages 15 to 24, and the vast majority of those who die by suicide have a mental illness that is often undiagnosed or untreated; and whereas half of all chronic mental illness begins by age 14 and 3/4 begins by age 24, therefore treating cases early could address and reduce disability before mental illness has become more severe; and whereas Nami-Johnson County will hold its annual walk at 9:00, 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 10th, at the Terry True Blood Recreational Area in Iowa City. The walk aims to inspire and initiate a community conversation about the impact that mental illness has on every part of our collective lives, from family systems to primary healthcare to the education system to the business community and beyond. Now forward there be proclaimed that I, Mayor Chris Hoffman, do hereby recognize May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and urge all residents to increase the awareness and understanding of mental health and be informed of the treatment options available in our county for individuals with mental illness. Laura, you're welcome to say a few comments if you'd like.
Thanks for having me here. The first time I've ever, it's kind of intimidating.
Would you mind coming up to the podium where we have a microphone there that we can hear you and broadcast?
Thank you for having me here. I'd like to invite you to be with us on the walk on May 10, if you can make it. If you can't, invite you to register and contribute what you can. If you're associated with a business, you can register as a business or as an individual. We're so very grateful for any funding that comes to us, especially in these times when we're holding together pretty good, and so far our funding looks good through the summer. But as many nonprofits are currently experiencing, our future is, is a little shaky financially. So we're very grateful for any support we get from our walk as it's our major fundraiser of the year. I also just wanted to mention to you, this is the first time I've ever served on the board of a nonprofit, and as an Iowa farm girl, I've always thought nonprofits are pretty inefficient with their money, until I got involved with NAMI. And I really, for those of you who are businesspeople or farmers, you know, every dollar counts. These people can take a nickel and, and really make it work. It's probably the most efficient nonprofit that I've worked with. I've never been on a board before, but I've been involved with many, and they're outstanding. And I think you'd feel good about how they would use any money that you would give them. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can give you this proclamation. Would you like to have a photo as well?
No, I don't need any photos of me. Thanks.
I will turn it over to council members to let us know what they've been involved in in the community over the last couple of weeks. Take it away.
I can start. I talked to Nancy and McKenzie from Greater Iowa City last Monday about some opportunities for some regional cooperation on some things, so we'll see how that goes. Last week, I was on the interview committee for the Clear Creek Amana Superintendent. And congratulations to Aaron Davidson, who will be coming our way from the Fort Dodge area. I did get to the fire department badging and bugle and lifesaving awards, and always appreciate everybody getting there. And you always learn a little bit of something else that these guys do that you don't really know what's going on, and it makes you appreciate them more. We went to the Emergency Management Agency. Budget amendment is coming up and will, similar to the cities, but they've noticed the reimbursement in a lot of federal funding, things that are coming from FEMA, but so far the funding is trickling down. They are planning a building, a building to house all the equipment in Tiffin up, actually by the, where the roundabout will be. Very discouraged, you noticed that the soil there was very poor, so hopefully that won't translate into issues for us. In the building, they'll probably have to make it a little bit smaller. And it's Mental Health Month that's coming up, and just letting people know that April is Donate Life Month, and for organ donation, it makes a big difference to folks, and you know, personally, up some of my patients are alive because of people donating for that. It just, the Iowa donor network actually is based here in North Liberty.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else?
Mayor, like I think many of us, met with reps from Greater Iowa City to discuss the loss possibility, so appreciate them taking the lead and starting that conversation the day after you were part of the Think Iowa City Strategic Plan. It was our turn as a board, so a lot of good things will be coming from that, and we'll be able to share the results of those things as, as they develop. And then lastly, with the proclamation on mental health awareness, you know, just a reminder of the cool thing that this council did, renaming a ball field in memory of someone and, and drawing attention to mental health awareness. So something that the city's been involved with in a number of ways, in partnering with nonprofits in our sector and highlighting that. So I appreciate that proclamation tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, let's see. I attended the United Wake Condition of the Community Breakfast. That was a couple weeks ago, and that was interesting. Had a lot of interesting region-wide statistics that I had not seen before about housing and things like that, and health and some other issues. So I think those will be interesting to see when they, when they get their final, their final stats together and distribute them. I also attended the Greater IC lunch that same day, and let's see, the UIHC ribbon cutting, and I also attended the, the fire department's badging and pinning ceremony, which I certainly recommend to everyone. It's always, as Brian said, it's, you learn something new each time, and, and it's important to celebrate the people who are out there willing to, to risk their lives for everyone else.
Thanks, sir.
Just to add the UFI Healthcare opening, what an incredible facility and lucky to have that, you know, right here in North Liberty. So just kind of mind-blown by, by how great that is and how much that does for North Liberty. And then also, as Brett said, I met with Katie Gerlock from Greater IC about the, you know, just discussing the potential of a, a local option sales tax. Yeah, that's it.
I think we've all been to the Greater Iowa City. Yeah, I did as well. Met with McKenzie on some additional information there, so look forward to that discovery and learning more with that group. Attended, obviously, the ribbon cutting on Friday for the UI hospital, but also, I think, even more impactful and kind of just the excitement and the energy around the open house on Saturday, that the UI Healthcare. I attended that, and there was a line from the, the door to the street, just to get things started off, of, of community members who are engaged and wanting to learn more and are proud to have that facility in North Liberty. So excited about that opportunity. I'm excited about potential future opportunities with a lot of the growth that we have going on. I know we have some representatives here tonight as well. And then just for me, a couple of congratulations. So I mentioned a number of times University of Iowa alum, but also a Drake alum. So just learned today that I believe Kayla Armstrong, a North Liberty resident, submitted a picture of her dog for the Beautiful Bulldog Contest. So congratulations to Kayla for having that recognition, the Drake Beautiful Bulldog. And then with that, all of the athletes who have qualified for the Drake Relays. I know that's, that's a pretty big, that's a state nationwide event, and the effort and energy that those kids put in to qualify for that tournament is, should be recognized. And so we're, we're proud to have both of those recognition opportunities for North Liberty. That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Move on to item 10, which is Johnson County Aging Report. And item A is presentation of the Johnson County Living Communities Community Survey. I noticed that. What should we do? You gonna give it?
Sure, I'm qualified.
It appears as though we don't have anyone here to present that. However, it is, there is information in our packet online. If you've had a chance to look at that, you're welcome to. We will move on to item 11, which is our FY 2025-26 budget, and item A is the public hearing regarding FY 2025-26 budget and capital improvements plan. At which time I'll open the public hearing for anyone that has comments about our, about Everyone's here for development purposes. I'm going to leave it open just for another 30 seconds or so. All right, I will close our public hearing, and I'll move on to item B, which is Resolution Number 2025-43. And this is a resolution adopting the annual budget and capital improvements plan for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, for the city of North Liberty. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Wayson.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Leibl.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 12 is Urban Renewal Plan Update, and item A is a public hearing on the proposed expansion of the North Liberty Urban Renewal Area. So I'll open up the public hearing for any comments on this urban renewal area. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll move to item B, which is Resolution Number 2025-44. And this is a resolution to declare necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.4 of the Code of Iowa and the End Approve Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for the North Liberty Urban Renewal Area. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Park, seconded by Wayson. Are there any questions about that? Tracy, you have a roll call, please.
Leibl.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Sittig.
Abstained due to a conflict.
Smith.
Aye.
Wayson.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1. Item 13 is the 2025A bond sale, and item A is Resolution Number 2025-45. This is a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on proposal to enter into a general obligation corporate purpose loan agreement and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed $3,850,000. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second. By Wayson, seconded by Smith. Are there any questions about that? Yes, sir.
Ryan, could you just tell us what this one is for?
Yes, I can. So as I tried to articulate in the packet a little bit, that in July, we're going to have two bond sales. One will be for a variety of projects that we have completed or, or are in the process of completing. Centennial Park being one, City Hall another, and a couple road projects, Forever Green Road Signals, West Penn Street, and then a portion of Kansas Avenue that we had to reimburse the RISE grant administration for. The, we've already done hearings previously on City Hall and Centennial Park, so what you're seeing here tonight is, is just information pertaining to those road projects. But when it's all said and done, the total amount borrowed for projects will be closer to $9 million.
Any other questions? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Wayson.
Aye.
Leibl.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. And item B is Resolution Number 2025-50. This is a resolution setting the date for a public hearing and additional action on proposal to enter into general obligation urban renewal loan agreement and to borrow money thereunder. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
By Park, seconded by Wayson. Any additional questions on this? Tracy, a roll call, please.
Sorry. I do need to abstain on this one, right? Or is this a?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it'll be 4-0, not 4-1.
My apologies. Thank you. Tracy, can I have a roll call, please?
Wayson.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Leibl.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Abstained due to a conflict.
Motion carries 4-0.
Sorry. Didn't mean to pardon.
I like it. It's all right, I like it. Item 14, the Centennial Park Project Phase II, and this is item A, Resolution Number 2025-46, a resolution authorizing the execution of services agreement between the city of North Liberty and Shive Hattery, Inc. for the Centennial Park Event Complex Project Phase II. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Sittig, seconded by Smith. Are there any questions about this?
It's exciting.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. Move this right along. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Park.
Aye.
Leibl.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Wayson.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 15 is Greenbelt Trail Part III and IV. This is Resolution Number 2025-47, a resolution releasing surety and accepting improvements for Greenbelt Trail Part III and IV, Part III and Part IV in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Wayson, seconded by Sittig. Any questions on this one? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Park.
Aye.
Wayson.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Leibl.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 16 is MLDC, Inc. rezoning, and item A is public hearing regarding proposed rezoning. Now is the time for anyone in the audience wishing to address council on this item. I knew if I waited long enough, maybe you'd rise out of the chair.
Hello, City Council. Pleasure to be back here again. Just want to say that I am really anxious to hear what the developer is introducing tonight, and so I really don't have any questions at the moment, but I, can I waive it so that when it does come time, if I do have a question during the presentation or after it, that I could come up and address the council?
Generally don't allow that.
I know you don't.
Hopefully the questions are.
Will be answered.
Not the, yeah, hopefully they are.
Okay.
Let us know.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Colleen. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and move to item B, which is Planning Commission and Staff Recommendations. Russ?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, here's a location of the property and the request. It's just north of Forever Green Road, just west of South Jones, and just south of the Chipman Extension, Chipman Lane Extension. On the left, you see a current zoning map. The right side, which is yellow, is currently zoned RS7PAD. That was rezoned several years ago. And the west side, which is the green, is interim development. So it just is a holding pattern, waiting for a zoning. On the right-hand side is our future land use map, which is designated UMI, which is urban medium intensity. And that's generally densities up to 14 units per acre. So this is one consideration we would give. The other primary consideration, so we look, we look consistency with the comprehensive plan, and then we look at compatibility, which we'll, we'll talk about, a little bit about. On the left is the proposed concept plan that's been submitted, the most recent one, and the one that was advertised for this meeting. A large portion that is RS4, where the detention pond would be, and to the east of that area would be RS6. The rest, and the majority of the rest would be RD10, and then there'd be two lots that are RS9, which are south of the existing RS7 lots. The, the image on the right is a concept plan that was associated with the RS7 when the rezoning occurred. You could see the green area, and then the red area was, was showing kind of a future layout and a future request. And so the, the green was, I'm sorry, the red was never voted on, but the green was. At that point in time, this was all single-family, RS7 is single-family, and it had a, a proposed a road, an access road down to Forever Green Road to provide for another access, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a, in a little bit. As proposed with the current proposal is 57 units, and, and on the right, if I counted up all those units, it was 54. So it's, it's generally pretty close. I'm showing this image just as an evolution of the request as we've gone through the public hearing process. On the right, large majority of the property was RD10, and on the west boundary and the south boundary was RS6. Based on some of the feedback they received, amended the request to increase the detention pond, that was the RS4, so this would be the middle image, and then included some RS9 lots. Still, we reached back out to the neighborhood, said the, the request has been amended. Please share your thoughts. Still received a fair amount of objections, even based on the middle request. And then the third request happened subsequent to the planning commission meeting, and, and that's actually what staff recommended and how the planning commission voted. And then before the city council meeting, they amended the request to be consistent with the planning commission recommendation. So again, a large detention pond, which would be RS4. And again, this is just a concept, but it, it does lock it into these boundaries for zoning. The purple you see on the southeast portion would be RS6, and then majority is RD10, and then two lots would be the RS9. So again, I talked about a few things, right, of the comprehensive plan, which is urban medium intensity, so you look at consistency with the comprehensive plan. All of these zonings would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, but we also look at zoning compatibility. And if you look at this map on the left again, you see large lot, home sites, so you look, you look to see, you know, trying to achieve, from staff's perspective, achieving compatibility with those surrounding property owners. So you have larger lots to the south, you have the majority to the east is RD10, but there is a very large lot that is RS4, I believe. And so I think that helped guide some of the concerns staff had throughout the process in order to. in order to have some single-family zoning in those locations. The other locations, especially to the north a little bit, and to the west, we were comfortable with the RD ten, and then having the single-family adjacent to the RS seven, which the RS seven is a little bit smaller of a lot classification. Just some of the things that we talked about during the public process. This is just a concept plan that I drew. It's not locked in or anything, but generally shows the roadway network as we would expect it generally to be developed. The east-west road in green is Remley Street that would connect from South Jones to Kansas, and then Alexander Way is the road which curves north-south. And then you have these, some of the streets over in Forever Green Estates have started to provide that roadway network, and then some of the development patterns on the east. You'll see I circled this area in red. It's still a right-of-way. We just don't see a need to require an access going down next to large homesites. I think at some point in time, it made sense, but we are looking at Forever Green Road as limiting the number of access points that we have on there. And then if you look at the image on the right, it's actually kind of an offset from the driveway entrance over at Keystone, and then the home site directly to the east, there's a driveway in close proximity. You still have the fire department requirement that you can't have, you can have a maximum of 29 housing units before you need a secondary access. So with the concept plan they provided, they would have to link up and provide another secondary access if they didn't want to construct that road. We always typically hear throughout the process about drainage concerns. They're valid, and we respect them, but I just kind of want to talk a little bit about there is some stormwater detention that was built as on a temporary basis, and you can kind of see the blue lines of kind of how things naturally flow, as well as the features that were constructed. And some of that water flows from the north and makes its way to the southeast, to the east, I'm sorry, into that creek area. And then the plan set on the right is just showing those plans that showed that temporary construction. I think there are a few people surprised, especially those homeowners on Chipman and Mayor, that thought, wow, there's no way a house can be built behind me, but that was always intended to be a temporary kind of drainage feature. We did have a Good Neighbor meeting on February 17th, and we did have a few people attend the meeting. City staff was there, and again, we always appreciate these opportunities to reach out to the public and talk about these things before we get to the planning commission. We have received a fair amount of objections. We did receive one late, so I want to note that. That'll be included in the protest, but the Iowa state law, if you have 20% or more of the land area within the 200-foot radius, and that's what that red line represents, city council is compelled to have a three-fourth majority in order to approve the request. Right now, based on the last one, we're sitting at about, we're sitting above 30%. So I will note that the request has evolved since those objections. We've reached out and said, you know, these requests have changed, or you know, it's totally up to you, but would you be willing to withdraw the request? They had not been withdrawn, and that's fine. So those objections are valid, and so the three-fourth majority still stands. And those properties in pink represent the property owners that have submitted those So we did have one finding, and that was based on the amended request, and the planning commission accepted that listed finding and forwards the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval, and their vote for recommendation for approval was unanimous. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Russ. Before I pass it over to you guys, I just want to acknowledge, and I think everybody probably did their homework on this one, as Ryan asked us to do, but our Planning and Zoning Commission was thoughtful in this process, and if any of them are watching or look back on this, we appreciate those comments and the degree to which they discuss this. Russ and the developer, I also appreciated how much work you put into addressing those concerns, and by and large, those concerns have been addressed in some fashion or another in what we're looking at here. I don't have any questions for you specifically on that. You guys have any questions for Russ?
Mayor, I'll kick off with a few. So I did watch planning and zoning as part of the research, so certainly appreciate that board's work, as always, and again, echo the work between the developer and the landowners around. Russ, the, let's, I guess, let's start with the property on the east, the RS four. So give me some history there. How did that RS four get lumped in with RD ten? Was that an existing?
Yep.
Structure?
Yeah.
And that was the agreement, was RS four at that point?
They owned the land.
Yep.
And left out the home site, and then the rest got rezoned RD ten.
Okay. And then with the retention pond, that's very large for that scope. And so I guess a little history there, and why is that zoned RS four? That seems odd to me.
I think it was a way to, you know, again, this is a concept plan, and so this does appear large. My understanding is it accepts some of the stormwater from the north, and so it gets, it's a bit larger. But the idea was to have it an RS four zoning that, like, let's say, for instance, that while we guessed wrong, and the pond needs to get smaller, where that property still remains RS four.
Okay.
And I think the spirit was to keep it consistent with the RS four to the south.
Okay. And then those property owners to the south of that retention pond, what is the summarized view of those folks? What's their main complaint that are backing up to the RS four?
I think the, to summarize a few points, I think some of them are technical, which we'll have to review as far as the review of development plans, like, you know, concerns about the size and what the detention area looks like and how that functions, and having that negatively impact. Those are really tough to answer upfront. I think overall, the concern too is, hey, you know, there is a commitment for single-family zoning in this area, and there sure is a lot of RD ten in here. And so we appreciated those concerns. We do recognize there's a market shift, and that's why we kind of try to come back at it with the compromise of saying, how about, you know, the RS four here, RS six adjacent to those other homesites, and then RD ten kind of in the other areas.
What would be the city's plan for that easement if we're not going to use it for a through road?
I think similar to the one on the west of the subdivision. We would just vacate it.
And then it would just be up for sale for? Okay.
I don't think it's up for sale.
No, it would.
Just goes back to.
It depends on, and depends on how we got it. There are provisions in place for that, and if and when we get to that point, I'll provide a menu.
Okay. But right now, it's just easement, not.
It's actually.
Right away.
It's physically right away. So the city owns that strip of land.
It'd be the world's worst park.
Great.
Ideally, though, it would just, we'd find a way to go back to the adjacent property owners.
Sure.
Do appreciate the extra time here, Mayor. I know you're reading our faces, and we're with the update in the RS six. I'm just, like colleagues, reviewing the.
No problem.
Reviewing the letters again.
I've recently learned that this is how you process in real time. Take your time.
That's, that's all I have at this point.
All right. Are there any questions for Russ? Thank you, sir. I'm going to move on to item C, which is applicant presentation.
Good evening. John Martin with MMS Consultants, representing the developer. I just add to the presentation that Russ gave, and I think he did a great job of outlining the evolution of this project from what you see on the left to what you see on the right and where we are today. And as he pointed out, we made those changes to address, to the best of our abilities, some of the concerns expressed by the neighbors about the type of unit, the type of construction behind their properties, adjacent to their properties. We wanted to make sure that there was ample room for the stormwater, so it does look like a large area right now, but it's sized such that there's opportunities to expand to make sure that it can, it's not crowding the neighbors to the south, and that there's plenty of room to meet the requirements that the city would have. I think there's a lot of opportunities for that area long-term, as that area continues to go to the west for a nice, a nice feature in that area. That's a green space that could be a nice area for that entire community as well. So I don't have anything else to add. I'm available for any questions, I think.
Kevin Digman with MLDC, if he has anything to add.
Well, again, I just, Russ did a good job of explaining it, but again, we started on the left in that image with, with our first meeting with the city staff, evolved after the Good Neighbor meeting, and then after the P and Z. And one thing, Russ, do you mind going back to the street concept?
Sure.
I mean, this is just one parcel, but I wanted to, like, point out, and maybe can you move your cursor a little bit, like, in addition to this plat, we have the land to the north of this, the same development group does, right? That comes off of, that's up there. So this is kind of continuation of that. That is a lot of, I think, RS six or single-family up there. So when we look at this as a developer, right, we're taking a large chunk of land and trying to provide some diversified housing that, you know, in today's world, a zero lot is affordable housing, right? I mean, everything's $400,000 plus for even those. So we know how expensive everything is, we know how interest rates are high, so we're just trying to find a way to diversify the housing. And then with the huge buffer that we created, I mean, I think we're over 400 feet from any of the homes from the south of us to wherever the back of our lot would be because of that huge detention area that we've created, so. And again, we were trying to be sensitive to the homes to the right, too. So happy to answer any other questions anybody has, so.
I want to go back to a question that Counselor Smith asked. Why, those RS fours, why not just make it an outlot? I heard, I heard John talk about it, possibly, we don't know how much detention's going to be needed, or if it's not, maybe it's just used as a nice green space in the future.
So it has to be zoned something. Currently, it's a mix of RS seven. It overlaps a little bit, the existing RS seven and the interim zoning. More than likely, it's planned as an outlot, but we have to zone.
It has to start someplace.
RS four is the lowest, you know, that it's consistent with the rest of.
Okay.
Basically match the zoning to the south.
Yeah.
So it's like, whatever touches those lots is basically RS four.
So a site plan that we would see following this would identify it and segregate it possibly as an outlot instead of homes being developed in there.
That's what's contemplated right now, based on the zoning. And again, to Russ's point, it's generally locked in. I mean, obviously, lots may change a little bit, but because of the different zoning designations, it's generally locked into that.
I got you.
That concept that you see on.
Been doing this for a long time, and I've never noticed that we waited to identify outlots until the second part of this.
And, you know, the geography is one that lends itself to that area. You know, the detention has to be, unless they want to pump the water and do something different.
Right.
Send it in a different direction, that's where the pond has to be.
Yep, no, that part I agree with. That's why I'm like, why can't we just call it an outlot instead of monkeying around with it as an RS four? Thank you.
Mayor, I think John would be shocked if he walked away from the lectern without me asking this. I'm a stickler for these detention basins. Please tell me it's not dry, John.
Wet bottom.
Excellent, thank you. And idea of, is this going to be what we would see in typically around town? Is it going to be rock shore? Is it going to have beautification around? It's not, it's not just going to be grass, that type of thing. I know I can't pin you down, but just conceptually, what are you looking for that?
Whatever is designed in the city accepts us, is assume what it will look like.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
So it would look better than Forever Green Road and Jones Boulevard? That pond?
I got to think where that is, quite honestly.
They're in the corner of Jones.
Yeah, you could see it right in the image. Yeah, and I think.
So those were designed, those were designed over the existing and adjacent to the existing stream corridor at the time. They were also, you know, have a sensitive areas ordinance, but those are also areas that were, I don't believe they were classified as wetlands, but they were existing drainage areas, and they were just modified throughout that development process to accommodate the stormwater. I don't anticipate them looking like that. Certainly, that's something we could look into, you know, as Kevin said, as we go into the preliminary plat process and the design process.
Any other questions for John or Kevin? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item D is then first consideration of ordinance number 2025 dash zero seven. This is an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in the North Liberty, Iowa, from RS seven PAD, single-unit residence district planned area development, and ID interim development district to RS four, single-unit residence district, on approximately 4.10 acres, RS six, single-unit residence district, on approximately 1.74 acres, RS nine, single-unit residence district, on approximately 1.74 acres, RS nine, single-unit residence district, on approximately 0.42 acres, and RD ten, two-unit residence district, on approximately 10.34 acres. Before I ask for a motion, as a reminder, when we move to this discussion, as Russ pointed out, we do need four affirmative votes in order for this to pass. With that in mind, if you think that you may not want to, we have a couple of paths. One would be to vote and approve, one to vote, turn it down, or if you think you may not want to, and you would prefer to table the item, we can come back to it. With that, I'll take a motion for consideration, please. I guess maybe one question first. You mentioned, Russ, that nobody has withdrawn their protest. Were they given ample time with some of these approved or updated images to have that opportunity to say, hey, you know what, and give it due process or due thought to remove that?
I believe so. Some of the correspondence came through Ms. Chipman, through some of the owners, the property owners. So I did email back.
Yeah.
Ms. Chipman and said, you know, here's the amended request. The Smigel's also emailed and said, you know, here's the amended request, and just said, you know, there's an opportunity if you want to withdraw your request, but certainly I didn't want to feel coercive in any way.
Right. We need an answer, yeah.
Yeah. Also called Mr. Smigel, again, just to say, you know, just want to make sure, as city staff, we are communicating. So I feel we communicated well about the change in the request, and certainly, as adjacent property owners, that's their right, just to.
Sure. Yeah. I just want to make sure that they weren't rushed, or there wasn't anything. And then just clarity, the planning commission had all of this feedback as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Yes, sir. Can I ask Grant a question? So we can move this and talk about it, and then table from there?
You sure can.
Okay.
I mean, you can always table, you can, I mean, whatever you need to do, just, I'll be right here and answer.
Okay, thank you. So then I would move first consideration, so we can talk about it. Move by Wason, seconded by Sittig. All right. What are your thoughts?
In full disclosure, I objected formally and stuff. So I appreciate, though, the work that was put into that in moving the RS six, or the RS nine to the RS six, because the RS nine was just, that was definitely a nonstarter. I actually preferred closer to the original plan, where the western border was a single-family, and then we had in the middle the RD ten. We've done that in a couple of places, like in Harvest Estates and stuff, and I think that's worked out pretty good. Appreciate having, you know, the big, that big area to kind of buffer things around a little bit. It's interesting, though, that from my house, which is just to the bottom of the green box, you know, when I look to the north and west, alls I see is roofs of houses and stuff because of the way the topography, I'm down, it goes up and stuff. I'm just concerned that if we put two-story duplexes in that western ring of that, you know, I mean, alls I just may see is more house roofs and stuff. So that's kind of my biggest objection to that. So I don't know if there's a way to, you know, when you look at the topography. So I don't know if there's a way to, you know, when you look at the topography, if that area could be just single-level duplexes or not, like we have in some places. You know, but I do appreciate, you know, the kind of compromise of moving to RS6, and we've done that over on Jones Boulevard, where we put the RS6 behind the RS4 houses, and that's kind of okay-ish.
I too appreciated the back and forth and the compromises. Again, John knows as he goes into the design of that outlot, what my thoughts are on retention ponds. It needs to look nice. It's not going to be a grass pit, or this counselor won't be voting for it. So as long as that's going to be a spot that's going to be nice, it's going to look nice and be usable for the, you know, from the houses that are being around there. And you're going to want it to look nice, or the places aren't going to sell. So that's what I'm going to be looking for on that outlot. I appreciate it.
To be clear, that's going to be a private basin?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. You know, for me, I'm looking at the process, you know, of what was originally proposed into what it is now. I know, you know, rezoning and balancing, you know, what's there. Like, I drive by, you know, those homes a lot. And, you know, but keeping, as I see it progress, you know, and having this water basin here, like I say, it's just, it's just hard to balance. But I feel like, you know, throughout the process, and I certainly, you know, appreciate everyone's feedback, and I think it's a, you know, it's a tough balance to find, but I do think, you know, that, and I appreciate that from the city, is, you know, working with those complaints and still having to manage, you know, growth and development. But I would hope that, you know, from the first plan to the second plan, you know, that water basin to me is, like, you know, Brent said, making sure that that's, you know, a nice feature, you know, that backs up to these, these homes that have been there for a long time is important to me. But, you know, the flow between each neighborhood, you know, I think, I think that's achieved, and I personally think that's a, you know, appreciate the process. And I think a balance, you know, has, has been made, in my opinion, a satisfactory balance was, has been found, so that's my thought.
Anything else to add, Brian?
No, just kind of repeat some of the other feedback. I did read all of the emails, and I really do appreciate when those are submitted with a packet so that we can get a perspective of those that are, that are impacted by this. In addition to that, I do put a lot of trust in what our staff recommends. And having that due diligence done upfront, including the feedback, is valuable to me from my seat when looking at, okay, now how do we move forward, not only for today, but for tomorrow and into the future? So I just really appreciate the feedback from the residents and then also from the staff, who we trust to put in these positions.
Any other comments?
I had a couple more things. And I don't want to belabor it, but Russ, I'm just looking at the comprehensive plan and the shape of the modern medium intensity is kind of odd. Can you kind of give us an idea of how that might have come about?
Yeah, and so, yeah. Love having the history of going through the process, which is so helpful. You know, we identified an area for park space, and then, and then you look at density of, a slightly higher density in proximity to where that open space would be. So, you know, the urban medium intensity was looked at on the east side. And then really, my thought is really as you get, and some of the west over towards Alexander Way was a little bit more in that medium density range. And then the thought was, as you get towards the middle, which we're moving towards, that that would be lower density, and then you see the ULI, the urban low intensity. The park space, having an open space, was a thought to have a little bit more of some density flexibility in close proximity to that park space was, was the reason we came up with that. And I think the line was probably due to a geographic feature, a drainage feature that was coming through there anyway. But that's, you know, kind of the vision as, and I've talked to John and Kevin about this, as we progress and move in, our expectation from the city is that we're transitioning to a lower-density, single-family lots back there. And that's, that made me a little bit more comfortable with density on the edges, but not ignoring the zoning compatibility issue. Again, you have the consistency with the comp plan that says, okay, you can have up to 14 units, but that's, that doesn't mean, okay, let's zone it to the highest multi-family. You just really have to take into consideration what zoning compatibility is and fit those things in to make it all work.
I'm kind of, I mean, I'm looking at what's here. I think this is not a bad plan necessarily. I mean, but reading the objections, seems like there were some representations made, at least the sellers believe there were some representations made about what was going to happen here. I don't love that, that we're changing that. At the same time, I'm an attorney, a real estate attorney, and I know I deal with stuff like this all the time. And unfortunately, sometimes it's not buyer beware, it's seller beware. So, I mean, looking at what's, what we have here, the changes that have been made, I don't think it's a bad plan, personally.
Any other comments? All right. Tracy, I think we're ready for roll call, please.
Wason?
No.
Sittig?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
This motion carries four to one and achieves supermajority there. Thank you all for your discussion up here, staff, Kevin, John, all of you as well. Move on to item 17, which is Cedarhurst rezoning land use map amendment and site plan. Item A is third consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2025-06, an ordinance amending the zoning map district for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from RM12 multi-unit residence district to RM21 multi-unit residence district. Could I have a motion for our third and final consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Wason, seconded by Park. Any other question, any last questions here? Tracy, go ahead, roll call, please.
Leibold?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Motion carries five zero. Russ, we're going to move to item B, which is planning commission and staff recommendations.
Yeah, these are where the, all the requests come together. I don't need to spend a lot of time on this. We've been talking about it for several months, but this is the, the site plan that formalizes the purpose for the rezoning. So this is 132-unit independent living facility memory care. And, and so you see some off-site improvements that'll be coming forward to you in the next couple of months, namely Julia Drive, which you see along the west boundary. So those are the subdivision improvements the developer has agreed to put in. But we've been working with Dover Development for several months. They've been amazing to work with. You know, the one thing I've mentioned in the past is we had a big concern with, with scale of the building being very large, and this is an important corridor in our community. And, you know, we asked, we said, look, you know, I think we need additional masonry on those west, south, and east façades, and, and they responded with some revisions that you see here. We think it's going to be a very nice building. They've built similar buildings in other communities, so I think they have a very solid grasp of what they're doing. So appreciate the effort getting, getting down to this last part, but planning commission did find that the site plan did achieve consistency with the approval standards, and they unanimously recommended approval of site plan as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions for us? Is there an applicant presentation?
No presentation.
Okay. You guys have put some time into this. I appreciate you being here. Are there any questions for the applicants?
No. Looks cool.
Yeah. All right, let's move to item D then, which is resolution number 2025-48, a resolution amending the 2022 North Liberty Comprehensive Plan, connected to tomorrow, future land use map for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from urban medium intensity UMI to urban high intensity UHI. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Park, seconded by Sittig. Are there any questions about this?
Mayor, again, I will just note with Ryan, moving forward, this facility will have a significant impact to public safety response, so it's just something that we need to be aware of and plan for.
Any other comments? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Wason?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Motion carries five zero. And finally, item E is resolution number 2025-49, a resolution approving the preliminary site plan for Cedarhurst, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
By Park, seconded by Smith. Any questions on that? Tracy, roll call one last time, please.
Smith?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Motion carries five zero. Item 18 is old business.
I just mentioned, as far as the MLDC goes, we still have two considerations, and all of those will have to have four votes as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless objections have been withdrawn in the interim.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think, I think they might need, I'll verify that for you and get back to you, that it's possibly might need four for all of them. I'll provide a memo. It's, you're.
They need to be withdrawn before the close of the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right. I think, I think that they would need four altogether for everyone.
Any other old business? New business? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.